Could you say your name again?
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry. And we chatted just yesterday.
Thank you for having me. So I'm going to be presenting on this report.
Could you speak into the microphone? There you go.
On November 29th, 2018, the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks released a new environmental policy titled "Preserving and Protecting Our Environment for Future Generations: A Made in Ontario Environment Plan." And this was intended to replace the previous climate change strategy that was put in place by the previous government. The province is seeking comments for the new policy that's put in place, and the public consultation closes on January 28th, 2019. I'm just going to go over some of the key highlights from the Made in Ontario Environmental Plan. So it's intended to be an overarching document that highlights the province's actionable items and how they're going to deal with climate change and its effects. They focused, they've chosen four key environmental concerns to focus on, the first being protecting our air, lakes and rivers. So the intent of this section is to highlight the important function ecologically, economically and socially the air, lakes and our clean water systems serve to our communities. They've set a priority to collaborate and invest in our federal provincial pre-existing programs that already exist, and to engage with stakeholders and Indigenous community members to identify long-term and short-term policy solutions. So as part of this policy, as part of this plan that they released, their main concern was about consultation and getting more feedback by communities, especially the Indigenous communities, which they feel have a lot to say and have a lot to contribute to the work that's being done around climate change. They've also indicated that they want to provide support to municipalities in increasing transparency around wastewater and stormwater overflows, and provide opportunities for municipalities to improve, invest and support in new technologies and practices in how we allocate for wastewater and stormwater management. The second area of concern was addressing climate change. So we all know that climate change has impacts on temperature, our infrastructure and our natural heritage. So they, the bread and butter of this plan was to create a new carbon tax system, which was in a, it is as a way, it's their financial system of supporting and putting in place some of the policies to mitigate and adapt the effects of climate change. So part of addressing climate change is they want communities to have better access to accurate information, tools and resources that will help Ontarians adapt to changing temperatures and the effects of that on their properties, and potential financial and social impacts caused by climate change. They also intend on developing better regulations and enforcement to ensure that there's accountability for industries that pollute. Factors that will influence regulations include trade exposure, competitiveness, process emissions, and the province has understood that while putting in regulations for industries, it's also important for our industries to be competitive on the market. So they've also provided across-the-board exemptions for industries that are of concern, particularly the auto sector. As I mentioned, the Ontario Carbon Trust is intended to replace the previous cap and trade program. The province has committed to supporting $400 million over four years to encourage private investment in clean air technologies. So the trust will work as, the trust will collect money through penalties by large-scale polluters that will cycle back and allow other private companies to access that funding to create and potentially develop technologies that will help reduce GHG emissions. This will place an emphasis on the private sector to develop clean air technologies with the support of public sector investment. The third area of focus has been to reducing litter and waste in our communities and keeping our land and soil clean. So the goal is to divert more of our waste from landfills. Currently, Ontario only diverts 30% of our waste from landfills. So in order to get the diversion rate higher, they've made an emphasis on placing, they've put an emphasis on getting more municipalities to participate in the blue bin or green bin program. This will help make producers responsible for managing the waste that they produce, and it'll be hopefully a part of the way of getting the diversion rate higher. And they've also, as part of the getting municipalities to participate in the green bin and blue bin collection system, they've also intended on creating strong enforcement actions against those who dump waste illegally, and developed champions within local communities that can help be, who can help develop programs and be part of, and who can, who can speak to the success of these programs. As I mentioned, they've made it a mandate that it's crucial to make producers responsible for the waste that they generate and through their products and packaging. This would mean towards moving, this would mean moving towards a producer-responsible model, where producers or companies take control of the end products and dispose of it in an appropriate manner. And lastly, soil has been one that's, soil management and how to dispose of soil has been an important topic of this policy as well. So the province intends on revising brownfield development guidelines to ensure that we're cleaning up contaminated land sufficiently, and that this land is being used efficiently. So as soil that's used in brownfields lands is not going back into agricultural lands, that is going through a proper process to be rehabilitated and then used again in areas that it's needed. And the last area has been conserving land and green space. So the focus of this one has been on natural spaces such as forest, wetlands, parks that play an important role in supporting our ecology, but also providing recreational and economic opportunities. This has been important to Gray County, that has benefited tremendously from the natural heritage. So as part of the province's plan, they intend on updating the environmental assessment process, which will better recognize how planning process can be better integrated into green space conservation. And they also intend on introducing a sustainable forest management framework where stakeholders like the Indigenous community can be involved in long-term planning of natural heritage features.
So HIPAA has provided a great summary of some of the objectives of the plan and some of the actual items. I'm here to give you a bit of the staff response and kind of translate it to what does it mean at the municipal or county level? What are we looking at here? So first off, we'd like to applaud the provincial government for coming forward with a plan early in their mandate and giving us the opportunity to comment on this. Although we have some questions and some concerns, it is nice to have something on paper that we can try to sink our teeth into. We're also supportive of the recognition within their plan that it's not a one-size-fits-all strategy for all of Ontario. Climate change in downtown Toronto is very different than climate change in rural Ontario, and we need provincial guidance that's nimble enough that we can react accordingly. With that said, you know, we do have some concerns with this plan, some questions. In reading some of the research that others have done into the plan, there's maybe not enough teeth, as some people have said. The province is very keen on coming forward with a plan that looks for solutions, particularly in the private sector, which doesn't burden taxpayers. In principle, we would certainly support that, but we do feel there is a need for public sector policy guidance at all levels, at the federal, provincial and municipal levels. They do point to some of the great strides forward that Ontario has made in the last number of years in helping to lower our carbon footprint, things like closing the coal plants and increased emphasis on active transportation, all good things, and we certainly support that. The county would also like to highlight an initiative that we're involved with that we think that would dovetail quite nicely with this plan, and that is the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative that the county is a member of. And this particular group, you know, as the name would suggest, has a mandate for looking over the Great Lakes and trying to make sure that in a multi-jurisdictional level, we're improving water quality and considering this natural resource. They've released some action items which are covered in the report, everything from looking at invasive aquatic species in this regard, looking at conservation programs for agriculture, government funding for Great Lakes restoration that we think that the province should consider in moving forward here. In this plan, they've highlighted some other initiatives that the province is involved with, which seem very similar in this regard. Some of the other questions about this plan have to do with some of the exemptions that they're looking at providing. They have talked about possibly providing exemptions for certain industry sectors, or possibly regulating large emitters. They don't define the term "large emitter," so we don't really know what that means. And we also feel that providing blanket exemptions for certain industries may be counterproductive to the overall goal of combating climate change. What we're suggesting as staff is maybe they look at a different policy whereby they're looking at all industries across the board and coming up with policies and regulations which are sympathetic to the size and the scale of industry. Certainly, we don't want to see any industry have to pack up shop because our Ontario restrictions are too onerous. That said, you know, we're not sure if the right approach is to give industries a free pass either. They've also, as HIPAA outlined, put forward the Ontario Carbon Trust, and they're looking at, to invest at least $400 million over the next four years. In terms of long-range planning and looking at everything from our infrastructure to business needs, we are thinking that maybe they should look at some additional dollars in that regard and make the funding a little bit more of a long-term announcement, such that people can plan accordingly and invest accordingly to make an impact over the longer term. In this regard, it would also be nice to see some very specific goals and measurable targets in the plan that the provincial government can strive to meet, and then we as municipalities can look to meet and implement in our own policies. That said, there's a number of matters outlined in the plan which have the ability to impact municipal service delivery, both positively and potentially negatively. Just a very quick highlight of some of those, including, as HIPAA mentioned, the waste diversion, green bins, they've talked a lot about electric cars and possibly natural gas fuel trucks, improving public transportation, potential updates to the building code, maybe more green government buildings or renovations to make our own government buildings more green in that regard, providing linkages between our natural systems and human health, and also the protection of species at risk, and also similarly, the preventing the spread of invasive species. You know, all of those in one sense or another fall within our municipal and county mandates, and certainly, you know, there's no one under the county staff that would argue against any of those. Some of our concerns come with funding attached to some of those. We know and we have heard that things like green bins are a wonderful thing to do, but also very costly in terms of service delivery at a municipal level. So we'd just be looking for the government to provide a little bit more certainty in terms of how we may move forward with some of these. And it's interesting that some of those initiatives, although the guise might be combating climate change, would certainly help achieve a number of other objectives. So whether it be updates to the building code to help promote intensification and more affordable housing, or public transit, we know that those are good from a climate change perspective, and we also know that they would be good at addressing a number of other county and municipal issues in that regard. We're also recommending through this report that the government take a little pause here and just allow for a little bit more consultation, particularly with industry who has the potential to be impacted by this plan, but with other sectors like agriculture and tourism, we think the conservation authorities should definitely be involved in mapping out the strategy moving forward. So we would just implore the government to reach out a little further to some of those organizations in that regard. And finally, we just wanted to highlight some of the county initiatives, whether they be recently completed or whether they be ongoing, that we feel tie into this strategy quite nicely. First and foremost, one of sort of the leaders in our own county corporation has been our Transportation Services Department. And with their Pave Shoulder Program and the increased promotion of cycling along with our Tourism Department, that will certainly go a long way in that regard. You know, as a planner, we couldn't not mention Recolor Gray. Certainly, there's policies in there that we think that would align quite nicely here, but we have a biased opinion. We also did our Green and Gray Natural Heritage System Study, and that seems to align with some of what the province is saying there. We are cognizant that natural environmental protection at any level, whether it be municipal or provincial, does need to come with a balance. We do need to make sure that our businesses are still able to develop, and that no one individual sector or landowner is being sheltered to much of the burden in terms of protecting those natural systems. We've also got other projects underway, including the Recreational Trails Master Plan, the Cycling Master Plan, as well as the partnership project being undertaken with Grace Alba Conservation Authority in Tanna Blue Mountains, to locate, making sure our infrastructure is resilient towards natural disasters, which would all align here very nicely. In terms of some of the stuff that's coming down the pipes that council will see more on in the future, we are, as Randy presented this morning, looking at updating our county forest management plan. There will be future updates to our forest management bylaw, and we've actually just received word as of last week that we'll have a team of University of Guelph students coming to help us study the need for a county-level climate change action plan, so you'll be hearing more on that shortly. So those are just some of the county's initiatives. At this time, we are recommending that council receive the report, that we submit the comments to the province as part of the EBR posting, and that we share these comments with conservation authorities, member municipalities and the Health Unit within Gray County. So certainly, if there are any questions, HIPAA and I would be happy to answer them.
Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for the presentation. One of the things Scott mentioned was the difficulties in providing services such as the green bins due to the lack of economies of scale. My question through Mr. Warden to staff is whether or not they're aware of the province announcing any grants or any such in order to enable municipalities that do not have economies of scale to run these programs.
I must admit, I haven't had my ear to the ground in that regard. I haven't heard any big funding announcements recently, but it's not something I'm as familiar with. It's certainly something we could look into, but staff aren't aware of anything at this stage.
Counselor Keating.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Scott and HIPAA, for the presentation. Really informative. My question revolves around bridges. All of us around the table have a lot of bridges on our plates, and recognizing your comment that natural environments need to come with a balance, and wondering if you think there's any opportunity to at least discuss perhaps a little bit of flexibility? I mean, I, and I know we all do, have great appreciation for the environment and all the ferns and faunas and butterflies and habitats and so on that are connected to our bridges. And is there likely to be, in your recommendations, any thought of providing the suggestion of any opportunity for flexibilities as we deal with more affordable solutions for our bridges that may involve, may or may not, I don't know at this point, but may involve having to reach into those habitats?
Sure, through you, Mr. Warden. Although not specific to bridges, it's interesting, the province just released a few days ago another discussion paper and consultation opportunity which county staff are looking to take advantage of. With respect to specifically species at risk and endangered species consultation, one of the things that they've highlighted in this discussion paper is whether or not there needs to be any greater flexibility or timing or permitting processes associated with that. So it's certainly something that staff are looking into and cognizant that both at the municipal and county level, we've run across projects that were significantly impacted, if you will, by potential endangered species habitat or species at risk habitat. So it's something we can come back with, if you wish, once we've had a chance to look into this other discussion paper further. As staff, we're certainly cognizant of the balance between, you know, needing to protect, you know, this important natural habitat, but also needing to make sure that our infrastructure is appropriately maintained in that regard.
Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. In the, in the report you, Scott, or in the report, it was mentioned that our, the county would like to see more, more input from First Nations, conservation authorities, the Health Unit and so on. My question through you, Mr. Warden, is there an opportunity for the county to reach out to these groups that exist within Gray County to collect their comments and submit them as part of the county's comments?
Of course, we'd be happy to always consult with the Indigenous communities within our, within Gray County. We do, on several of our, as Scott has mentioned, that there are several policies that we're looking to put out, and we do have taken the opportunity to consult with those members. And for right now, these are just comments on the provincial policy that's been put in place, but any of the other policies that we've put in through our department, we do consult with those groups.
Okay, then I'll call the question. All those, oh, I'm sorry, I missed you.
I'm just wondering, have you thought of reaching out even through the municipalities for public input that can accompany staff's report? Because I think there is a great deal of interest out there.
Sure, through you, Mr. Warden. In this regard, we haven't reached out for public input at this stage. We've discussed with municipal planning staff. One of the challenges with some of these provincial consultations that they put forward is quite often they come with a 45-day or 60-day consultation period. In this case, that consultation period extended over the holiday season as well, and, you know, while we don't all take the holidays off, there are some people that aren't, you know, in as active a mode during that period. It's certainly something, one of the reasons in our report that we're recommending further consultation is because we do think there needs to be broader engagement on this topic. You know, I will be honest, we haven't engaged the public on this one yet. It's certainly something that if council would like to see broader public consultation, we could look at that with your member municipalities, but I'm just not sure if that's appropriately done by the county or the municipalities, or if that's something we really push the province to reach out on, to get that feedback directly and to hear from people on the ground.
The deadline to submit these comments is...
28.
So they did, and they put out several of them in very short. So there was a lot of overlap there. I think, you know, the staff tried really hard to pull where we had had public meetings and consultation on individual files to really make sure that we pulled the benefit of that into the report, but certainly something to...
Counselor Bartnicki.
Just a follow-up on that, people may or may not know that Section 10 of Bill 66 was withdrawn yesterday, and I attribute that to the kinds of comments this staff and other groups sent to the ministry, so it does make a difference.
Okay, we're ready for the vote. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried. And by the way, Scott, I'm really liking the shoes. Okay, we're on to F. And Sandra?
January 8th is his birthday, not today.
I won't comment about your shoes. I can't see them, so. Let's see Scott. Yeah, so we need a mover for this item. Counselor Desai, seconded by, I saw some flinch over here. Okay, Counselor Gamble, thank you. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and members of council. The purpose of the Workplace Safety Insurance Board and insurance coverage renewal is just that. It's to give you a little bit of history of WSIB with the County of Gray, and to talk about the two types of insurance that we historically have had in place with the county. So Gray County is a Schedule II employer under the Workplace Safety and Insurance Board, and as a Schedule II employer, that essentially means we self-fund or self-insure claim cost accidents, occupational accidents that happen with our employees. So the Gray County has been a Schedule II employer since January of 1998. At that time, a consultant recommended to council that, given our good history leading up to that point, that it would be beneficial to the county to go from an insured WSIB employer to a self-insured WSIB employer. So Schedule I as an insured employer is essentially, the employer pays premiums to WSIB, the money is pooled, and claim costs are paid by WSIB out of that money that they collect, and the accident stays on the employer's history for about four years, and then it's off the employer's record. With that, you know, you pay the Schedule I insurance rate, and if you have historically low claims than your, than your comparators, you get what's called a near refund back, and if your accident claim history is more than your comparators, then they charge you what is a surcharge. Under Schedule II, you are paying, or we, as County of Gray, is paying 100% of the accident costs in addition to the administration fee that WSIB charges Schedule II employers to administer the claims. So if we have accident prevention and have low claim costs and bring our people back to work in a timely manner to keep our claims low, then of course, our claim costs are reflected in that. So under Schedule II, what we currently do is, as part of the budget process, we charge each department a premium to collect money from each department to put money into a fund, so that we have money set aside to pay for claim costs with the county. On page, I think it's three of my report, there is a history of the posted Schedule I rates that WSIB would have charged us, along with the County of Gray rate that was charged to each group. And our groups are broken down into long-term care, paramedic services, and then every other employee at Gray County. So over the years, you can see the significant reduction in the schedule, in the rate that Gray County has been charged compared to what the rate would have been had we been a Schedule I employer. That has remained true until 2019. For the first time in quite some time, we are charging one of our groups the full Schedule I rate. When we did a historical analysis, we realized that the rate we were charging our long-term care departments was not sufficiently covering those claim costs, that they were, in a sense, being subsidized by paramedic services and the general municipal group. And in some ways, that does make sense. It's, you know, it's our largest employee group, it's physically demanding work, so you expect to see higher claims costs in your long-term care and your paramedic services. And typically, in general municipal, you're going to see that in areas of transportation where there's greater risk factors in workplace injuries. So as a result of that, in 2019, the budget has been prepared with long-term care paying the full Schedule I rate. Okay? To put that into perspective, if Gray County was paying Schedule I rate for all of our groups, the premium that we would be paying would be $1,600,000. But with the two groups seeing a reduction, we're seeing a difference of $649,000. So that's, in a sense, what the county is paying, charging each department, or the savings that we're having. So what happens is, in order to protect us from catastrophic loss, the county has historically had in place two levels of insurance. Those types of insurance come into play in different, once the claim reaches a certain level. So if you go to page four of my report, you'll see a breakdown of a claim cost. So this particular claim is for a part-time PSW who was injured in December of 2018. And you can see the historical cost of the claim year over year, as well as the administration fee that has been charged. So as of December 31st, 2018, the claim costs have totaled more than $310,000. So this particular claim, the level of insurance that we had in place for the first level is slightly less than what's talked about in this report. It has a cap of $400,000 for the first level of insurance before the next level kicks in. So we're soon reaching that point. So this worker was 44 years old at the time of the accident. So this worker was 44-years-old at the time of the accident. She suffered a permanent impairment, and unfortunately, as a result of the extent of her injuries, we were unable to accommodate her in her own job or in another position. So the charges that you see there for rehabilitative, that is what WSIB paid to have her retrained to essentially do a minimum wage job. So her loss of earnings that are continuing now is the difference between 85% of her pre-accident rate and the minimum wage rate. So we will, the County of Gray, will continue to be responsible for those costs until she reaches 65, when the loss of earning component stops. There hasn't been any healthcare costs in 2008 posted as of this report, but if they were to continue, those would go for the rest of her life. If she needs healthcare resulting from that workplace accident, till the day she dies, the County of Gray is responsible for the cost of that healthcare. So you can see how the claim costs just continue to go on, even though this person is no longer employed with the County of Gray. So when you have costs that continue or can continue over time, that's why it's important for the county to really look at protecting itself against a catastrophic loss. And that's where we really get into the two types of insurance. So the first level of insurance is called Occupational Accident Insurance. So it is an insurance that kicks in when an injured worker, as a result of an accident, has what is called a non-economic loss of at least 25%. So that's the level of insurance as of the end of December 31, 2018. So WSIB, their medical professionals assess the level of the non-economic loss, or what's called the NEL. And it's basically a payment to the worker for loss of use. So how they have, they are maybe immobile, or don't have the quality of life they had pre-accident, so that injury has affected them for the rest of their life. The amount of NEL that's awarded varies, so it can play a part in theory of injury, how much of loss of use there is, their age at the time of the accident, and the amount of wage they were earning at the time of the accident. So there's no way to project what a NEL would be. So this particular worker, when she received her first NEL, she was awarded a 29% NEL. So sometimes what happens is condition worsens over time, and the injured worker can go back to WSIB and say, here's medical to support that my condition's worsened. If WSIB agrees, they may award an additional NEL, and that's why in those claims costs, you're seeing an additional NEL, where this worker then went from a 29% to a 34% NEL. The proposed changes in the Occupational Accident Insurance provided by the insurance agent, Jermaine Lloyd Thompson, who they represent Chubb of, Chubb the Insurance Company, they are seeing a significant rise in claim costs, where they've had to pay out a numerous amount of money, and they've made a decision that they have to change the level of insurance that they're providing to municipalities and other Schedule II employers. So they have provided the county with two different options that are significantly different than the coverage we've enjoyed to date. And they're listed there. So Option 1, the NEL impairment increases from 25% to 30%. The NEL rating must solely be as a result of the covered accident. So an example might be, you have that injured worker, the NEL is 25%. As a result of that NEL, they now have depression. Or they go for retraining, they witness a traumatic event, and now they have another type of injury that's not necessarily, you know, kind of related, but not really to the original accident. So WSIB said, well, you wouldn't be on that training if not for that workplace accident, so we're going to increase your NEL. So the insurance company is saying the initial NEL has to be at least 30%, where we have had claims where an injured worker did get training and their NEL was increased. So between the two different NELS, their NEL is now 44%. Under this new insurance, we would not be covered, because the initial NEL, if it's less than 30, there's no claim that we can submit. The cost of Option 1 is $71,900. So that's more money than we've historically paid for lesser insurance. Option 2 includes all of the items stated under Option 1, but they've introduced a 20% copayment. So our first level of insurance currently is at $500,000. That means the county would be reimbursed a maximum of $400,000 if you had an eligible claim. So the changes proposed by Chubb make it increasingly difficult to be able to submit a claim. When we started to really pay attention to NEL awards and so on, since, in particular, since we became a Schedule II employer, the NEL awards that were being awarded by WSIB at that time were commonly 30% or higher. But they've changed their practice significantly, and it's not as common now to see a NEL reach the 30% level at the first go. So that in itself is going to make it extremely difficult to bank a claim. So in addition, since that 2008 claim, the County of Gray has paid over $500,000 in premium for the Occupational Accident Insurance. And as stated previously, the claim, the insurance reimbursement we've received to date is $310,000. Now, this particular claim has a $400,000 cap for that level of insurance. The county changed its insurance in about 2012, where it was increased from $400,000 to $500,000. The other thing that council needs to be aware of is with the presumptive legislation on post-traumatic stress disorder, we are starting to see some claims in our paramedic services department that are related to PTSD. Under this Occupational Accident Insurance, PTSD is not an eligible claim because it's not seen as an accident. It's seen as a, the insurance does not apply to loss caused by or resulting from an insurance person's emotional trauma or physical illness. At the time of purchasing the insurance, we never even thought of PTSD. The biggest illness we had at that time was hearing loss. So at the time, we didn't, weren't thinking about insurance levels to protect us against occupational diseases. So, well, because of the changes to the occupational insurance, accident insurance, we are, staff are recommending that we not renew this insurance. Currently, we have an estimated reserve balance for WSIB to be over $3 million. We're recommending that the council, that the staff recommend budgets the way we have previously done. And if we have a year with a catastrophic loss, where we're not going to get insurance relief, in those years, we draw from our reserve budget if we're having a deficit. So those are the reasons why we're recommending not renewing this particular insurance. The next level of insurance is called excess indemnity. This insurance has a $500,000 deductible, which is currently supported by our accidental accident insurance. So when claims costs reach the $500,000 or more, we can then submit a claim to Chubb Insurance Company of Canada for excess indemnity. This particular insurance is not triggered by a NEL, it's purely triggered by claims costs. So, and the insurance company, again, has ensured that PTSD claims would be covered under this because it's not an accident policy, it's strictly a WSIB policy. They do have, that level of insurance has a cap for the administration fee of 28%. The 2018 provisional WSIB administration rate is set at 29.9. The actual rate won't be reconciled till about August of 2019. So, and as of today, I did check, we are not sure yet what the 2019 provisional rate will be. It'll be announced later this month, but I would expect it would still be around the The insurance provider has advised that the premium for the excess indemnity will increase by 2.85%. This level of insurance is, charges that premium rate on insurable earnings. And our insurable earnings are at the cap that WSIB sets. So the 2019 maximum earnings, I believe, are, I have it in there somewhere, $92,000, I think. So that figure increases every year, as do salaries tend to increase by cost of living each year. So, and then when, if we increase our employment, increase our FTEs, you have more staff that we have to charge a rate for and have insurable earnings. So that's where the 4.5% compounded increase comes from. Part of that is increased rates, part of that is increased insurable earnings, and then the 2.85% premium increase. This level of insurance kicks into a maximum, will pay a maximum claim of $15 million. To date, the County of Gray has not had any claims paid under this, but we're going to get there with, eventually, with that claim that's talked about in the report. Staff are recommending that council continues this level of insurance to protect itself against catastrophic loss. The budget was built on the excess indemnity insurance to be $182.9, and, sorry, $183.3, and including provincial sales tax, the insurance company is telling us the cost for that insurance is $182.9. And under the legal and legislative requirements, the financial costs for the occupational accident insurance are listed there as well.
Crystal clear.
That's a lot of information.
Can I say? Is everybody clear on the decision that you're being asked to make? So we have two, at the present time, we have two levels of indemnity insurance. The one up to $500,000, we're saying, we paid more money into that than we've had the benefit of claim costs. We're not, we're trying the best we can to make sure that we're keeping our people safe. We've only had the one claim, so we don't have a lot of evidence to suggest that we have an issue in this department. So what we'd like to do is just step away from paying that premium, because we believe we have sufficient in reserves to carry us along, unless something changes, but still maintain the higher level of catastrophic insurance, because I think that's just prudent.
Kevin, I don't know if you have anything from a financial perspective to say.
Yeah, we looked at this, the HR staff and yourself, and the other thing is how difficult it is going to be able to actually make a claim on that first level of insurance that we thought, you know, with the NEL being now at 30%, and that if someone was reassessed and, you know, was only at 28 and was reassessed, I wouldn't qualify again. And we just, we just said, based on the premiums and what our history has been, and then just the level of this, that we would take that risk and use our WSIB reserve then to support that risk. The other, in the catastrophic, staff, we felt strongly that, you know, if we had something really catastrophic happen, that we didn't want to risk the corporation that way. If you had, say, four individuals in a truck or something like that, or an ambulance where, you know, your two paramedics were badly hurt, et cetera, that we didn't want to expose the corporation to that. But we just felt it was so difficult to maybe qualify for that first level, to pay that premium, it'd be best to just bank that premium ourselves and self-finance any of those claim costs.
Just one other thing, I mean, this PTSD that Sam was talking about, if there's changes to that, and we start to see a lot more claims coming through, we might be looking at this completely differently. Because if this wave of PTSD actually hits, then we're likely looking at a completely different scenario. I think it's probably one of the up-and-comers. I know that Sam talked about it a little bit, but for right now, I think this is the right way to go.
Counselor Mckee?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. There's a lot of moving parts in that report, and I sure appreciate it. I don't pretend to understand it entirely, but I have faith in the senior staff's recommendation, and I'll fully endorse it. But I wondered if Counselor Desai was confident in the math from that report.
Well, all due respect, I'm not the math teacher. Counselor Mackey?
Thank you, Warden, and through you to Kevin. The $3 million that we have in reserves, do you think that's sufficient to, it's almost like a self-insurance now? The premiums that we're saving, should they be added to that reserve pot?
That's what we look at, using that, what we call it, like our fund, it's our WSIB and Weekly Indemnity Fund we have. Yeah, we also, as we're, as part of doing our financial statements, we're required to do an actuarial on our stuff. So we have had actuaries on our WSIB based on our claims history and stuff. And it's, it rated future benefits of, if all these criterias were met and costs were that, and PTSD, et cetera, et cetera, was saying about 2.4. So we feel confident our reserve level is set based on what the actuarial has said, that we're in a good spot, that we could do this.
Counselor Soever?
Yes. The, just a clarification, the excess indemnity, it says all expenses exceeding $500,000 to a maximum of $15 million. And that's per incident or per individual?
It should be per claim.
Per claim. So in the instance of, say, four people in one, that's four claims or one claim?
Typically, they go by WSIB claim, so each one would have their own claim number, but I will clarify that. That would be my interpretation, that the occupational accident one is based on an individual claim. I don't believe that this one's any different, but I'm going to confirm that with the insurance company.
Good follow-up?
Yes.
Let's begin, Mr. Warden, now. So what, so on an individual claim, so the 500 is ours anyway, and we're paying $183,000, and we're capped at $15 million, so you can't, I'm not a math teacher either, but I prefer to, but, but anyway. But anyway, so basically, a catastrophic claim, we're really protected for that range? And I know it's difficult to predict, but province-wide, what, how many incidents would there be that fall within that range? And, you know, because $183,000 every year builds up pretty quick if we put it in a fund.
You're right. I don't have information on how many claims in the province have had multiple injuries out of one claim. Haven't had very many of those at the County of Gray, they've just been small, but you sort of have to look at the risk council's willing to accept. We have paramedics where the majority of people, there's typically more than one person in the vehicle. The same holds true in transportation. So you have to look at the risk that's there and what level of risk council's willing to self-insure.
I would say the most recent example I'm aware of is New Tecumseh, where they had a group of works employees working on 89, and someone hit up the crew. And there were one person, there was a fatality, and a number of people were seriously injured. So it does happen, you just hope that it never does.
Counselor Bartnicki?
In terms of the additional funds going into the reserve fund, I'm not sure who to direct the question to, but this council could elect in future years, if it built up significantly, to significantly, to redirect what's going into the reserve fund. Am I correct on that?
Kevin, probably we've asked.
Yeah, like Sandra and, and the HR staff and finance, we look at these, yeah, and we would, we would, we would recommend that we can lower our premium rates, for example, than on our WSIB, and, and lower that amount that'd be going to reserve, et cetera, yes.
Thank you. And just to add on to that, one of the things the actuarial company does is they look at our levels of insurance. So, if council decides not to renew the first level of insurance, they may determine that our reserve balance should be higher.
Okay. Are we ready to call the question? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Sandra, you're on again. We're dealing with seven G. I'll need a motion, please. Thank you, Counselor Woodbury, seconded by Counselor Leary. Sandra, you have the floor?
The employee group benefit plan, is it, is it insured through two companies, Sunlife Insurance, as well as AIG Insurance? AIG is currently our provider for our accidental death and dismemberment, and Sunlife Financial has all other insured levels of insurance for employee group benefits. Mozy and Mozy are the County of Gray's agent of record, and they facilitate our renewal with those insurance companies each year. So, in May of two thousand and thirteen, Mozy and Mozy conducted a, a full market study, and as a result of that study, Gray County moved its health and dental coverage from Greenshield to Sunlife. The long-term and short-term disability and life insurance benefits were already with Sunlife at that time. As a result of that renewal, the county enjoyed significant savings. We were warned at that time that the savings wouldn't be sustained, and, and that's the risk you take when you move from insurer to insurer. So, we did enjoy significant savings at that time, but when you see later in the report the history of premium rates, you can pretty much tell the year that, that we no longer enjoyed those savings. So, Mozy Mozy meets with Sunlife and AIG, and they review the historical data on claims, et cetera, and they negotiate with those insurance companies as to what those renewal rates should be. The report shows by employee group how many lives we have insured. You'll note that paramedic services, as well as unionized groups in our long-term care, they have self-insured short-term disability, so that those are not part of, of this renewal. In two thousand and sixteen, Mozy and Mozy again marketed at our group with the recommendation not to move. Again, insurance companies were recommending significant savings, but coming off those savings historically, council made the decision to stay in place with the same insurers, and because it, it's too difficult to manage the fluctuation in the tax rate in years where you have significant savings, and then you get hard-hit with, at renewal, making up for those savings. So, we have been with AIG and Sunlife for all of our benefits since two thousand and On page three of the report is a breakdown of the renewal projections as provided by Mozy. Life insurance and extended health, sorry, life insurance and LTD, and those types of benefits tend to be pooled benefits, where extended health and dental benefits are purely cash-in, cash-out. So, those are the ones where you tend to see a significant amount of change. They have their admin, admin fees in there, and then it's just typically inflation rates, as well as how many claims our employees are, are submitting to the insurance company. So, the insurance company, again, if they have a loss, they're going to make up for that loss in the next renewal. If they have savings, then we might get a little bit of a break. At the time of the renewal, there were fourteen active disabled employees, representing forty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty dollars in monthly LTD claims. So, those are claims that have been submitted, where the insurance company said the level of disability was sufficient enough to pay claims based on the type of benefit the employee group has. It doesn't mean that more claims weren't submitted. We do have groups where their first level of LTD, they have to be disabled from any and all job from day one. That's more difficult to get, to get improved by the insurance company. It just means we had fourteen active employees on receiving LTD benefits at the time of the renewal, and I believe that was one more than the prior year. In, in the chart below, below that, you will see the historical premium percentage increases and decreases. Mozy and Mozy is, has told us that our annual average over the past five years is five-point-one percent, but you can see year over year how, how the rates have changed. And in particular, you can see in two thousand and fifteen, when we came off that rate guarantee, that the county was significantly hit, that was a, a hard budget year. So, Mozy is saying that five-point-one percent annual average increase is typical, but that just makes it difficult for council to make decisions, to try to support its ratepayers, to keep the tax rate low, when you're facing average increases of five-point-one percent in, in costs that exceed two-hundred, like three-hundred thousand a month. So, that's a, that's a lot for council to accept, and we recognize that. Most of our employees are unionized, so it makes it difficult to try to change benefit coverage. The unions aren't typically receptive of reducing benefits. That's a challenge at negotiations, and it's not going to go away, so I, I think we have to try to find a way to find savings elsewhere, so that we can try to get that average five-point-one percent lower in the years to come.
Just on that topic, and again, Kevin and Sam have been involved with this stuff, our collective agreements, most of them can go to arbitration, so before they agree to any benefit reductions, they usually say, let's just go to arbitration, and the arbitrators won't take it out of their collective agreement. As soon as the union hears concession, they say, that's fine, let's just go to arbitration, and they usually get what they want, depending on how, how the wages are and so on. We spoke with our rep from Mozy and Mozy, and we're planning on starting some employee information sessions on exactly what the cost is to employ, let's say, just one person, and start adding up these benefits, the employer health tax, Omer's, and everything else. And, we're, we're at a breaking point, and we have been for quite a while, but the arbitration system hasn't really held up. They're part of the bargain in really trying to find out if we can actually afford this. They've made some changes with some recent decisions, but, so we will be looking at some information sessions. We're going to be starting with the non-union. Often, you have to start with non-union, because we have more flexibility there. And, so that's something that Sandra and, and I will be working on likely in March, April, May.
Thank you, Grant. Questions? Counselor Mackey?
Thank you, Warden. Do our retired employees have benefits? Do our retired employees have benefits?
Some of our, some of our retired, early-retiree employees have benefits. So, typically, you know, if we look at non-union QP, which is transportation, OPSU and social services, we typically have the same early-retiree coverage. So, you have to be re, you have to have twenty years continuous full-time service with the County of Gray. You have to be retiring with an Omer's pension, and you have to be between the ages of fifty-five and sixty-five, and then that level of coverage stops at, you lose your benefits at sixty-five. We don't continue them beyond that. So, it's an early retirement provision.
Thank you. It's a type of bridge. It's a type of bridge benefit.
It is, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you, Sandra. Is it Mary Lou or Kevin up next? Oh, Mary Lou, okay. This is our budget item, I'm going to look for mover, get it on the floor. So, Carlton, Counselor Mackey seconds.
Thank you. What I need is like a really cool video, like the last time I was here with Pat and his roll-off trucks. I got nothing. I don't know how to jazz this up, Eddie. My report is on Ontario Regulation two-eighty-four oh-nine with regard to the two thousand and nineteen budget. So, this regulation came into effect when municipalities were required to record their tangible capital assets on their books. So, prior to passing the budget, we have to disclose to you that there are certain items that we do not include in the budget, such as capital asset amortization, post-retirement costs, and if we happen to hold landfill, there are solid landfill costs and post-closure If we had chose to put those items in the budget, we would still need to prepare the budget that you see, that will be before you on January thirty-first, because we need to be able to determine how much to raise from taxation. So, this regulation allows us to exclude from the annual budget, the amortization, post-retirement costs, landfill costs, but we need to advise you in advance. And, we refer to those, basically, they're, they're for accounting purposes, they're required to be disclosed on our financial statements, but they're not actual costs that you would see in, in your traditional budget, where you look at your profit and loss, and what our surplus and deficit is. So, when you examine this, the amount that we are showing from levy for capital projects or, and transfers from, to reserves, sorry, is greater than the actual estimated amortization. And then, the question is, why is it greater, or why should it be greater? So, there's a few reasons. One of the first is that amortization is based on the history. So, it's not a current cost, it's not taking into account replacement. You built a road fifteen years ago, those costs are substantially different than they are today. The road mightn't meet current design standards, doesn't take into account inflation, doesn't take into account changes in tendering, the amount of bidders that you might have. There's other things, such as, we could have an asset that's fully amortized, and it wouldn't be putting any money away. So, for example, the, what I would refer to as the original administration building was built in nineteen sixty, we put a fifty-year life on it, so there's no amortization. But, that building is still in functional use, still needs funds put aside in order to keep it in good working condition. And then, the third reason would be that it's not a good measure of estimating future capital requirements. It doesn't take into account any growth, or changes in service levels, or, for example, we just built a brand-new paramedic services base at the Chatsworth Depot. So, because we don't have the actual amounts for two thousand and eighteen, I'm referring to two thousand and seventeen in this report, so our actual amortization in two thousand and seventeen was just under thirteen-point-two million, and the estimate I have for two thousand and eighteen is about thirteen-point-four. And that number will be finalized in April, once we're done audit. So, included in the gross expenditures that we, at the time I wrote my report, was just over thirty-three million. The budget that you will see on the thirty-first shows gross expenditures of just shy of thirty-five million, and that includes money that's going to reserve for future capital spending, in order to maintain replacement of our assets. So, what we're, basically, we're telling you is that we are managing our investment in capital, and we're trying to have a sustainable tax levy to provide contributions to ensure that we can repair our assets and keep things in good working condition. Staff uses things such, like building condition assessments, vehicle and equipment reserves, all to ensure that we're putting away the appropriate amount of money, so that we don't have spikes in the levy, and there doesn't come a time where there's a surprise, where we have to replace a roof, and it's not in the capital forecast, and how are we going to fund this? The other thing we do, while, while we're not putting aside the actuarial assessment for post-employment benefits, we have to record that on our financial statements at year-end. We do put away in our annual budget, our estimate of what we are going to pay for the current year's post-employment benefits, so for the people that Sam mentioned that qualify, that have retired. The regulation also requires that we have an assessment on the impact of the excluded expenses, and what that does to a change in accumulated surplus. So, if we were going the wrong way, it would show that our financial position is deteriorating, because we're not putting away enough ass, money for assets, and our liabilities are increasing. So, accumulated surplus is different than what we talk about in our, we do the financial projections to you, and we talk about our surplus deficit. So, it's an accounting surplus, and it's about the amount of revenue recorded in the year, which is in excess of operating expenses, amortization and interest. And so, the surplus, the annual surplus updates the accumulated surplus, so it fluctuates year to year. And so, any surplus could be used available for repayment of debt principal, purchasing of new assets, and rehabilitation of our existing assets. So, at the end of two thousand and seventeen, the consolidated surplus was just over two-hundred-and-fifteen million dollars, and that was an increase of four-point-three million dollars over the previous year. And, that's the result of how much money we've continued to invest in our capital assets. The two-hundred-and-fifteen-point-four mil was comprised of a hundred-and-seventy-six-point-four mil invested in TCA, tangible capital assets, net of debt. There's just over seven-point, almost seven-point-three million dollars in debt, and that's all self-financed currently. So, that's the Greg Gable's roof, the expansion or renovation of our building here, and the build of the Chatsworth Paramedic Service Base. After that, we have forty-six-point-six million dollars set aside in reserves, and seven-point-six million in unfunded liabilities. And so, when I comment on the forty-six-point-six million in reserves, there's two million in working funds, at that point, there was three-point-one million in, for insurance, sick leave and WSIB, nine-point-five million for current purposes, and thirty-two million for future capital. And of that thirty-two million, thirty-six-point-six percent of it, or almost twelve million dollars, was held for transportation. And so, that's like a variety of activities for their capital budget, unscheduled maintenance, construction, future construction projects, structure and culvert rehab, depot and equipment vehicle replacement. And, just as another comment, just under shy of three million dollars had been set aside for the future development of Rockwood Terrace. And, that's pretty well it all. Nothing glitzy.
Questions?
I feel like I'm bored you to death.
Not as sexy as the truck, but.
I need to find a video, really.
Counselor Soever?
Yes, um, when, when will the, like, I know the budget's being presented on the thirty-first, but is it available for review prior to then, so we can ask?
Not to steal somebody's thunder, but summaries are back there.
It's a great segue. Before any of these leave today, I do have hard copies of, which really is, it gives all the highlights and then in summaries, and then we hope by the end of the day have the electronic version with all the detailed pages, et cetera, loaded for everyone's review.
Thank you.
That's about as exciting as when my wife says to me, Benjamin Moore released this year's colors. All right. Are we ready to call the vote? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much, Mary Lou.
I will say, Mr. Warden, that this morning was much more exciting than this afternoon.
It was not, yes. Elsa didn't have the miles on us that we have now. Okay. Moving on to I, right?
Yes.
The audio system. Okay. Counselor Desai moves and seconded by Counselor McKieveney.
Is he moving part one or part two there? There's a choice.
Yes, that's true. So...
Part two, motion.
Okay. Are you in agreement?
Sure.
Okay. So we're going with the OR. Okay? 75,000 option.
Great, thanks. You, Mr. Warden.
Yes?
So over the past year, we've moved into a new space in the council chambers here. And with that migration, we brought in the audio equipment from the former council chambers. Now that we've had that set up for a while and gotten to use it, we've had a chance to get some feedback from the people attending our meetings, the public. And we are getting a lot of comments that it's very difficult to hear in the room and that's been ongoing. We heard it a couple of times this morning, actually, from the gallery. And it is something that we've tried to address with our system. The problem there being that any time we actually try to increase the volume with our system, it creates an astronomical amount of feedback and all you get is screeching on the speakers. And we've looked at ways to remedy that. And not being an audio person myself, we did actually bring in a local vendor that specializes in electronics to kind of look it over and give us some solutions. What they noted is that something we knew, our system is rather old, but what we didn't know is that it's actually no longer supported. You can't replace pieces on it. It's all or nothing at this point. They did provide a quote for what an audio system replacement would be. Look, and that's just given how many microphones we have around here, the trend of moving to more portable audio boxes, which some of you might have in your own council chambers as it is with the switch on to talk, on and off to talk. It was about $55,000. However, obviously this would need to go through an RFP process and that could change that number. The other aspect to consider, which was inclusive in the 55,000, was our need for an assisted listening system in this chamber. We really do need to have one available in order to meet accessibility requirements. Essentially, all these are, it's a transmitter that hooks into whatever audio system you have and it transmits directly to headsets that we can loan out throughout the room and people can up the volume themselves. You can get neck loops that go by USB directly to certain hearing aids and that would be really helpful for people that do have those hearing impairments. So with all of those audio needs in mind, I would also like to get more direction from council on the future of our video recordings that we are doing because if we're opening up to some infrastructure changes in here, that would potentially be the time to do it. This is going to sound a little bit like Groundhog Day for those councillors returning because I was just here in October talking about this as well. But just to catch the rest of you up, our audio recording process is pretty much me over there wedging a 1080p webcam into the wall. It catches a wide angle of the room and it pulls the audio directly in from the microphones. So the pros on that are the cost. The downside on that is the image quality is definitely subpar. The audio is hit and miss again because if we're not using our microphones directly, it's not getting picked up in the video. As well, it's a very manual process, not being an actual, like, designed meeting recording program. It does take a lot of my time to put the videos together, make sure they get on YouTube, that all the captions go in, the edits that are necessary get made. So it is fairly time-consuming. Just to fill you in on some statistics, viewership has been fairly low when you really break down the analytics as well. You can see that people are really only tuning in for a few minutes of each video, which to me tells me a couple of things. For the most part, our audience is only interested in certain discussions. And as well, I think that the quality of our recordings is really limiting how long people are watching. If you're driving to area or down to another city or something, how long are you going to listen to your radio while it's crackling before you change it to another station? I think it, it does play a role that way. So there are multiple solutions for enhancing our video. Obviously, we would need to get some cameras in here that are more suited for the room, multiple cameras, exactly how many would be laid out by RFP. Again, we could set out exactly what our deliverables would be. Maybe it's combining the audio and video all together probably makes sense. But as far as the actual recording service that we're going to be using, do we want to show captions on the screens? Do we want to be able to link to certain reports right in the video? Those are all the different things that we can lay out there. And I have demonstrated in the past some of the different solutions that are out there. It certainly isn't a one-option situation. There are some that we could choose from. So I guess just in closing, sound system improvements would definitely benefit anyone that uses our room, people that come here for council meetings or the public when we do provide this room out to other groups. And certainly video enhancements, I think that would grow our online audience. And I'm just looking to this council for further direction on how to proceed.
Okay. Counselor Boddy?
Thank you. A couple of quick questions first. Analytics, December 20th. I assume that's 2018.
Yes, sorry. Yeah.
Second question is, do we record? Do we keep a recording, the audio? Or we just...
We do. I keep a hard, like, the permanent copy just on hard drive around the office, but it all gets uploaded to YouTube where it lives until we take it down.
Okay. So first of all, I want to congratulate our new warden for just shuttering the average from two minutes to seven minutes that people watch like fullest. Of the nine-hour meeting that we had, I can't believe that you helped him for a full seven.
Seven, yes. Yes.
We, we actually, I think our cameras in our, in our council chamber are actually owned by Rogers Cable. And I know they're expensive and when we moved down to, to the Bay Shore for a couple months, they'd take them in and put them out. They're living in their home. I don't know if there's an opportunity to talk them into doubling their pleasure and putting up cameras in here who's aware of crossing that. If you get an ombudsman complaint, it's really nice to have clean video and sound that kind of covers our behinds. We find a lot of people tune in on our Monday nights to watch our dong show. So mind you, we get about as much business done as we do here a day in about three hours because we're really quick and efficient.
I'll have to work to, yes.
It's amazing the comments that we'll get home to after people that have watched it. So some people keep it entertaining. I realize it's a lot of money, but I, I think it's worth considering.
Ron?
Sorry, just to comment on that. We have, I have approached Rogers on two occasions to see if they'd be interested in coming up here. At both of those times, it was a very clear no, they're not interested in it. But that's not to say that that couldn't change it.
The entertainment value.
Counselor Swirver?
Yes, I'd like to report from the entertainment capital of the Gray County. I was a little surprised at your statistics because, so I asked for our statistics and we actually had 4,300 visits and the average length of view was 50 minutes. So I guess, so we, we have a lot of usage and with, we just started this last year and, and the usage is going up. And, you know, I think our total cost of getting set up, now it's not as big a chamber as this, but was 8,500. And I hear we pay an annual maintenance fee of 11,000, which includes the closed captioning. And our clerk runs the whole thing from a little portable unit. She turns it off and on and she has access to, if there's a problem, then she just phones them and somebody comes and that's part of the service contract.
You. Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think Owensound probably gets their business done quicker because Boddy doesn't take up so long delivering needless speeches. Would you like hearing aids, Mr. Boddy?
My headphones aren't working.
So that's the first reason we need to go and make this expenditure so that Boddy can listen to when I'm speaking next. Counselor Boddy, sorry. The second, I truly believe that this does increase transparency because I, I was watching a YouTube video and I could not tolerate it for longer than a few minutes either because the quality is poor. Third, I, I don't, you know, I feel that right now I believe Rob spends time with the, the subtitling of videos. There is software that will subtitle things for you. And of course, the most important thing is Mel and I put up a very good show here, which I think should be captured in HD. So...
Or edited.
Uh-oh. Counselor Mel. Here comes the rebut.
Thank you for that sterling introduction, Mr. Warden. Two things, and I'm going to vote against this. I can't support this. Two things. Number one, the video is put out, and the sound is put out on YouTube, which requires high-speed internet to, to watch. And most of our residents in Gray County do not have access to that. The second reason is, is most people have heard, you should neither watch sausage being made or legislation because it'll turn you off both. Particularly if you got input such as that. Yeah, nice sweater. No, really, $75,000, it's a lot of money. I'm not as concerned on the performance as such as it is to get the legislation done. I'm, I'm, I'm interested in the results and I think there are ample opportunities for people to research and, and understand what decisions we come to currently without having to spend an additional $75,000. And then I'm sure there will be additional cost to maintain it, look after it, edit it, on and on and on and on it goes. I just think 75,000 could be used to support additional long-term care bids if nothing else.
Rob, anything to add to that?
No.
No. I wanted to see if there's anyone else before I come back to you, Counselor Desai. Counselor Bart Nicky?
Just for you, Mr. Warden, just for clarification, you're spending about a day every, every meeting to do all these tasks for us, are you not?
Yes, and that's including time in the meeting as well. Transitioning slides and making sure that what's showing on the screen is visible.
So knowing that you all, all our staff have other things that they can be doing and time is at a premium, would a new system take into, that into account and free you up for other things?
It absolutely should. A lot of the automated systems, like I believe your, Blue Mountains is on Civic Web, I think, just remembering back. Like, a lot of that, it's integrated right into a webpage that's designed for you and the meeting's done, you click end meeting and it's, it's up and it does all of those other features that I'm doing manually.
Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Rob, do we know the price of just the upgrade of the sound system without the video recording?
Yes, that would be that, around that 55 mark, but we wouldn't know the exact total until we do an RFP.
And Counselor Mackey?
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Rob, I heard from our friends in Blue Mountains that their system costs 8,500 and we're looking at one for 75. Why such a disparity in the two numbers?
I would suggest that, like, the 75, keep in mind, 55 of that is just for the audio system and all of that infrastructure replacement. So we're really looking at about 20 that I'm suggesting in here. And that would allow for multiple camera angles, that being, like, the cameras being a big piece of the cost because just being such a round horseshoe, the one wide-angle shot doesn't really deliver a lot of transparency for a lot of the public watching who may not know whether to close up who would be speaking. They would need to have a little bit more. They would want to see the whites of your eyes in some cases, I believe.
If, if I can, in preparation for delivering this report today, and we wanted to get something ahead of having the budget presented to you next week. Rob had met with the local vendor and had a conversation, but he hadn't prepared a formal quote for us. I wanted some kind of a number to be able to tell you, so I phoned and asked him to give me a quote. And that's the 55 that's in here. So I, I certainly think that, you know, with a properly-formatted RFP with some specifics in it, that there's likely some play in that number. I know if I was a businessperson and somebody asked me for a back-of-the-envelope number, I, I err on the side of caution. So if that helps at all, I just want you to know that, you know, this is a little bit loose there, but that was a ballpark number we got. And there is a lot of equipment in that cupboard there behind as well as what you have on your desks.
Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a quick piece of information for those technologically challenged, such as Counselor Mel. You do not require a high-speed connection to watch YouTube. And it's, it's like back in the day when you had dial-up. YouTube still existed somehow. You just had to load it up in the morning before you went to work and then come back and watch it. But high speed is not necessary for YouTube. Secondly, I, I completely understand that there are other avenues for members of the public to, to do their research around how we arrived at certain decisions. This aims at making that easier for them, which is why in my first, in my first bid, I, I made a reference to increased transparency. We're trying to make it easier for the public to find out how council came to a certain decision, which is why I support this expenditure.
Okay. If there are no other comments, I think we're, oh, there are. Counselor Swirver?
Just in the way, clarification, so there, there's two separate things here. One is the...
Only one that's on the floor is the OR at the $75,000 mark.
Yeah.
Yes.
So only the 75.
Includes the video.
Yeah.
And the audio.
And, and the audio. But the audio portion is 55, which is the other part of the OR. So the, the recording itself is only really 20 of the 75.
Correct.
Yeah, that's just, want to make that.
Understood? Are we good to go? I call the vote. All...
Sorry.
Oh, I thought you had a question. All those in favor of the motion? Put your hands up. And opposed? That's carried. Thank you, sir. Moving on to item number eight, other business. Is there any other business? Seeing none, we move on. Any notices of motion? Counselor Mel?
Well, I bet you're ready for the next one.
Well, you're taking Mr. Burley's job. So motion to adjourn moved by Counselor Mel, seconded by Counselor Burley. I'm sorry, you have to be in second place this time around. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's Christmas, though.
I need them all.
Can you just combine the average?
Thank you, sir.
The budgets are coming. The budgets are coming. Yay.
I just, just like to mention on the... I just want to, want to mention, if you want to get line by line, we'll have that, that'll be coming out of lecture.